Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general chapter thirty A, section eighteen and Governor Healy's. March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three order extending remote participation by all members of any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the housing subcommittee will be conducted via remote participation. Specific information and general guidelines. For remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting remotely following the instructions at the top of this agenda. And every effort will be made to ensure that the public can access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Pursuant to MGL chapter seven C thirty A, section twenty F, after notifying the chair of the public body, any person can make a video or audio recording of the open session of a meeting. Of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of such recordings. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listing of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So the town of Great Barrington is um. Recording, I see someone uh from the newsletter and a few people, so you're welcome to record, but just letting you know that um. At the very least that the town is recording and we do have a quorum, so we'll take attendance. Uh Jeremy.
I'm here.
Okay, Malcolm.
Here.
Garfield.
Yeah.
Okay, and I am here. Uh approval of the actual October twenty fourth minutes, I I uh. Uh whatever, I can't anything, I apologize, thank you. I apologize for putting October twenty fifth, but we have the October four twenty fourth meetings approval. Uh any um. Any notes or do we have a a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Okay, roll call, Garfield.
Hi.
Malcolm.
Hi.
Jeremy.
Hi.
And I am I, okay, subcommittees announcements and statements, Garfield.
I'm nothing, thank you.
Okay, Malcolm.
Nothing today, thanks.
Um Jeremy.
Uh, nothing for me.
Okay, and nothing for me. So uh I know we are in a time crunch, I believe Garfield needs to sneak out at about six fifteen um. So we're very, I'm gonna bring uh Sam Nickerson uh on board, he is going to uh. Speak with us and answer some of our questions and we're very thankful that he is um. Coming to speak to us, so I'm gonna promote him to panelist. I'm gonna allow him to talk. So first of all, welcome, Sam, I really appreciate you coming along. We have a many questions to ask you, but if you'd like to kind of um start off and and give a a brief introduction on who you are and what some of the developments you've done in Great Barrington and elsewhere. That would be very, very helpful.
Sure, yeah, well, thanks, thanks for having me, yeah, so I've been here in the Berkshires for about fifteen years and I was just over the border in Connecticut before that. And uh my my background is is mostly in finance, um I've worked in venture capital field for a while, I have a. MBA from the University of Chicago and so for the last. Fifteen sixteen years I've been doing um small scale development, mostly mixed use, um all of the projects that I've done have been adaptive reuse of existing buildings. Um mostly in sort of downtown Main Street areas, so I think most of you are familiar with forty seven Railroad Street, which is right in Great Barrington. Um I'm working on a project now in Lee where we're building sixteen apartments that are gonna be kind of mid-range. Uh market rate. Um and um yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity to come in and talk with you all um. I prepared a a few slides and then I'll try to just kind of blast through those and then leave time for for discussion, but I I think the idea that. Um you know, thank Jeremy for kind of inviting me to to come and talk to you, I think I think the idea was really just to kind of hear from a a local, smaller scale developer about some of the the challenges for. Creating new housing units and and so that's that's sort of what I was trying to address. So let me, let me see if I can share my screen here. Okay. Great. Can you see that? Okay, good.
Yes.
So um I'm not gonna talk too much about the problems because I think we all know that there's something like between four and seven million. Housing units short in the US, it's just a problem everywhere, it's certainly not unique to the Berkshires or to Great Barrington, kind of everyone is is struggling with it. So from my perspective as as a developer, I mean, what what are some of the the challenges about that? First of all, the a very complex permitting process, um and that's that's kind of where I wanted to. Put the most emphasis tonight. Um but there's a whole other host of other reasons, um labor and materials inflation, uh that also includes things like design costs are really a lot more expensive now. And just getting access to skilled labor. The the new interest rate regime that we're in now, that is a big deal and I I think we actually haven't seen that. Fully hit yet because there are still projects that have been financed in the past that are going ahead. Um but my friends who are developers, very few of them are starting any new projects because they just don't pencil out with the new um. The new interest rates, so so that's that's a real difficulty um. Access to capital, I mean, that that kind of takes two. Parts, one is the the equity capital, the seed capital that's needed. Um also um. Getting loans is not as easy as it used to be, um you know, I've I've had a couple of. Of loan renewals recently and um it was a painful process, you know, with Silicon Valley Bank going down and all these things, it's. Um it's it's hard out there getting getting capital, um and then also the it's just tougher to operate these buildings now, all the costs are going up. Taxes are up, insurance is up. Um just getting spare parts, everything's more expensive and it's it's just that much harder, um and then, you know, the. In addition to the zoning, some of the other things, I mean, you know, as you all know, we were. The 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 code requirements, especially for a new building, are really stringent, so those those are all the difficulties. But if if there are, if there are, and there's this such a need and everyone knows about it, then you know, why, why is it that it's so difficult for it to happen? What's what's broken with the market, you know, why, why isn't everyone becoming a developer and and renting out apartments and, you know, because the rents are high and 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 why is that? Um so from my opinion, I I actually think the complexity of the process is is the main. Barrier that we're facing, um and and it what it means is that. It it takes a relatively sophisticated person who has access to a whole network and a lot of resources to be able to pull it off at all. Um and and this is, this is where it gets into this. Return on brain damage and 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 this is a real thing, I mean, it's kind of a joke, but it's it's also a real thing because it's. It's just as difficult to do. You know, eight units as it is to do, you know, a hundred, it's the exact same process, so so this is. And and I looked, it's it's actually hard to get statistics on what the average size of a of like an apartment development is. I think nationally, it's it's probably well over a hundred units. Um so that's an additional difficulty for for us here in the Berkshires because. I mean, that would just be totally out of scale for really any of the towns around here, um but that's. That's sort of the scale at which it makes sense, but given the process, you know, if you go through the whole thing, you might as well build a whole bunch of units. So that part of the math is is really difficult in particular for us because. Um here in the Berkshires, you know, the smaller sized projects are gonna be the ones that are gonna sort of fit into the community the best. Um and then. The, in terms of what type of a person needs to, you know, what. What are the personal characteristics needed to be a developer, we certainly high risk tolerance, um you know, it's it's a it's a risky business and you can, if you. If it goes south, you can lose a lot of money. Um and and then low self-esteem because um everyone dumps on you, you know, you're out there, you're you're trying to do the right thing, you're trying to, you're trying to build housing and um. People just love to beat up developers, so it's. All these things contribute to. Fewer people entering the pool and I think I think what we want to do is create a system where. You know, somebody who is a is a an electrician or a plumber and knows a few things about building sites. They could maybe become a a smaller scale developer because it's, you know, the 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 big guys, the the big, the big institutional developers, they're they're just not gonna come to the Berkshires to 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 work on things. We're gonna be a homegrown group of developers if we want more to happen. Um so I'm I'm not gonna talk too much about affordability, man, I think everyone knows that the difficulties with with this, but the the point of this slide is really to make the distinction between affordable housing, which is this very specific thing with involving subsidized rents and all sorts of certifications and checks and balances. And then just housing that is affordable. And. Most affordable hous- or housing that's affordable is is not actually designated affordable housing, most of it is just market rate housing that's just at a lower price point. And so this isn't to criticize affordable housing because that's it's obviously a super important um program to have. But there's just a limited capacity of how much can ever get done and that's a very, that's an even bigger deal, I mean, that's that's adding a whole other layer of. Um sophistication and resources and time and all these things, so I think I think if if we're serious about adding more housing. Um then I think the emphasis should be on um. Just market rate housing that is affordable, not not necessarily on affordable housing and and I think. From from my point of view, um in in public meetings in particular and also just in a lot of the public discussion. The the affordable housing seems to just completely dominate the the discussion and and instead of it being like one tool among many, and I I I think it's because people just don't know what else to do. And so that just looks like the solution and I I think. I think that the point here is that it's it's one part of the solution, but it's not like. The one ring to rule them all and and we need to find some other things to to do as well. So just quickly on on miss- missing middle housing, I I'm sure most of you are already familiar with this, but if if you, you it sometimes gets distorted, really, the idea with missing middle housing is, it's talking about the form. So so what gets built right now, you get single family homes and you get large developments. What's in the middle, the the duplexes, the triplexes, the cottage courts, the townhouse developments. These little things and these are the, these are, this is the housing stock from the past. That we're all kind of depending on now, but very little of of new projects fall into this middle zone. And um and you know, I I encourage you to check out this website if you haven't seen it because it goes into a lot of detail about the form here. So uh so kind of gauntlet number one is is planning and zoning, um there there are just a lot of restrictions on on building. Housing period, first of all, whether it's in some zones, you're just not even allowed to at all. Um the second one being. Dimensional requirements and that that has a number of factors, including setbacks, height restrictions, lock coverage, all those sorts of things. Um parking requirements are a big one, I'm gonna spend a little bit more time on that, overlays zones and then and then special permit requirements. So these are all. Um factors that 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 we have local control over and and all of them limit the amount of housing or at least the ease of housing that that can be built. So here's a couple of examples, um over on the left, this is, this is a house in in my neighborhood, that's on Castle Street on the hill, um. So ten years ago, that house was. Uh a four family, uh multifamily, um I think it was originally built in the twenties as a single family home and um. So the 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 four family that was there, I think predated the zoning and then eventually somebody came along and and bought it and converted it back. Into a single family home, it looks great, I'm not trying to criticize anything, but. I I think it's a problem with the zoning because this house, when it was single family or when it was a four family. It never caused any problems in the neighborhood, it looks perfectly fine, I mean, you can't even tell wh- what it was from the outside, it could have been anything, right? Um so it's it's now under the current zoning, um. Absolutely not allowed to to do this for family, so to me, I I I think that's. That's a a a lack of recognition that that the form of that sort of relatively large sized house. Inherently had a lot of flexibility for different uses that we've taken away, we've we've done that to ourselves. And so that's that's one example, um another one is downtown, this is on Railroad Street. I picked this building because it's it's small, it's it's relatively plain. You know, it doesn't have a lot of fancy ornamentation, it's just a really basic downtown building. And um. I'm gonna go back to this later, but the the point about this is that. Railroad Street has a bunch of these little buildings, um and and you could never build a building like this. Um again, for like a variety of different ways, it it doesn't meet the dimensional requirements, it doesn't meet the lock coverage, it has no parking. It's just totally non-conforming in in many ways, but. It's not causing any problems and um those are, these are the sorts of things that become really difficult to um to build again. So let's talk about the special permit in particular, um so I've I've done this a number of times, I've done it in Great Barrington, I've done this in Connecticut, I've I've been through the process, it's it's, you know, they all, every town is a little different, but the overall process is is the same. These special permits are super elaborate, I mean, you wind up with just hundreds and hundreds of pages of documentations. Most of which are really expensive engineering reports and then in many cases, I don't think anyone ever even reads them. Uh I had a case in Great Barrington where we were required, we're required to do this, this very specific type of engineering report. And then no one uh either on the select board or the planning board could even read it. So we were required to go and hire a second opinion engineer to read the first report that we. Already had to pay for, so it was just, it's just crazy making. And 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 none of these things are for free, it's it's very easy to continue to make the process a lot more and more elaborate and I'll have all sorts of requirements and checkboxes and things. But all of those things then manifest themselves either in just eliminating marginal projects that otherwise would get built or. Uh eventually, all these costs have to make their way into the rent. If they don't, then the developer is out of business. It's just as simple as that. And um the the other, the other thing about the the special permit um process is that um. It it requires a big investment upfront, all all the, you have to come with this package and you you've gotta have the answers, you know, you can't sort of come in front of. These boards without. You know, having having your game plan, so so that means. By the time you're coming, sort of asking for for your special permit, I mean, you you could be hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Into this before you even know if you have a project and then if it gets turned down for some reason. You're just. Hose, you you've just taken a huge loss, so then, so then the 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 risk. Of of going forward with it is is just too much in many cases, if if people are afraid that the neighbors are gonna complain too much. Or if they're gonna get sued, um. They just won't do it, so I I think I think this eliminates a lot of the smaller projects, I think it eliminates some of the more marginal projects that that maybe are are some of those. You know, infill type projects we we'd like to see. And the the other point that I want to make about the special permit process is that it's it's really a um. A deceivingly biased process, it's it's sort of. It's sort of described as this very public, very democratic process, but but it's. That that's not actually the case, I mean, I've been to many of these meetings as as I'm sure all of you have too. And and this is, this has been studied in in academic studies, that the people who come to the meeting are not the general public. They tend to be older, mostly white homeowners. Who are opposed to the projects or or just the people who come and and kind of. Oppose every single project and 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 most towns have at least one or two of those types of characters. So it it it. It creates this very artificial view about the perception of the project, that the people who support the housing. Generally don't support it vehemently enough to come to the meeting and pound their fist on the table, yes, this should get approved, but the people who are against it typically do. And so it's it's just a very, very backward um way of looking at things and it's it's not representative of of the community. Um it it excludes people who are renters in general because. You know, the renters who would who would maybe want to advocate for a a housing project. They might not even live in the town right now, right, I mean, we don't even know who who's these people are. Um typically, the meetings are at night, so you know, families with kids, they don't come. Um and and so it, there there's just a whole host of problems with this, um I think, I think the idea in the beginning was probably that. The special permit should be used for like really unusual cases where they needed a lot of extra scrutiny. But I think it's evolved into. You know, this is, this is many, many projects, very routine ones all have to go through this and and um. You know, I I I just won't accept the idea of, oh, you know, don't worry, we're we're nice people, um. You know, we we give out special permits all the time because. People come to these meetings and totally raise cane and it it provides a platform to do that, so I I think the special permits. Are overused and 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 those, it that it should really be dialed back. Um here's, here's one interesting idea, this is kind of a new trend that I've seen in at least three cities in the US and I I think this is really fascinating, the the idea is that. The town has sort of a menu of of pre-approved housing projects and you know. Here's, here's one that's a, you know, a regular standard house, but I mean, it could be a triplex, it could be an eightplex. And so if if you go and use one of the pre-approved plans with a site plan and a floor plan and everything. It you can just get a staff level approval and just get a building permit, I mean, you can put different skins on it, you could put different finishes. Um but you you basically key, so so this is an intriguing idea, um you know, this is the type of thing that would probably take a lot of buy-in over time, but I I I think it's a. I think it's a good idea and this is really worth watching because this could really speed things up and um. And and solve some of these problems. So yeah, let's let's talk about parking for for a little while, um I I I think anybody who is on the select board or on the planning board or really has anything to do with land use, this is, this is sort of required reading. Um because it 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 takes. Um you know, the the sort of comprehensive. Breakdown that's done by Don Schu to to really, to really understand the ramifications of what all these parking requirements are and and so, you know, he he kind of starts off saying, well, what if pizza was free? You know, would would there ever be enough pizza? No. No, there there wouldn't be and and so we've, we we have this expectation. That. We get to drive wherever we need to go somewhere and then park for free. Right in front of it. And without any kind of acknowledgement about what that does to like the overall system and there are a lot of those things because it's, you know, especially for off-street parking. Um you've gotta pay to build the parking space, you've gotta maintain it. And then there's a huge opportunity cost, especially in a downtown. If you're using up scarce downtown land with surface parking, which is usually what it is. And so then then now what you're doing is you're kind of locking. The system into lower and lower value improvements. And so the the costs of all of those things just get baked into all the 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 products and services that that we. Use, so I mean, if you, if you, if you go to a shoe store and buy a pair of shoes. You know, part of what you're paying for is the parking in front of the shoe store. But it it doesn't matter if you drive or or bicycle or walk, you're paying the same, everyone pays for the parking, everyone pays all the time. It's in the rent, it's in the services at the barber shop, it's it's in the cost of the shoes. So it's forcing the entire community, whether they even own a car or not, to pay for this parking. And and then it it also just. You know, generates a bad land use pattern because. The more parking you have, then things start getting more and more spread out and then you have to use a car because everything has these huge parking lots and you can't walk around. So. This is, this is really worth studying, I I can't emphasize enough, e- everyone should read this, um and and um it's. A lot of people have gotten the message, I mean, this this thankfully, this is, this is probably the area in which we've seen the most progress in terms of parking reform. Here's a map, I entire cities are just eliminating parking requirements. You know, I think, I think the uh the closest to us, um. Albany and I believe Hartford have both just completely eliminated off-street parking requirements. Because everyone's figured out what a bad deal it is for the cities. Um so so this is, this is something I think we need to work on, I don't think there's a single town in in the Berkshires that has done this yet and we're really behind on this. So here's, here's a way that. I think we can kind of change the discussion because a lot of the of the, especially at these public meetings, the the discussion is is just people locked in these ideological battles, it's almost like politics. So if if there's one thing from this that I want you to kind of really focus on, it's this slide. This is a total game changer for looking at all these land use issues. And the the idea is very simple, it's just. Value per acre, so the one thing that Great Barrington will never have more of is. More acreage, unless we bought West Stockbridge or something, we just have a fixed amount, right? So whatever the town pays for, it has to come out of that just set amount of acreage that we have. And there is a huge difference in the income to the town. In different land use patterns, so. Uh as an example, so here's, here's Barrington Plaza on on the left, which by the way. Is, you know, meets all the requirements for parking and zoning and setbacks and all these things. The assessed value is fifteen point eight million, that sounds really great, right? That sounds like a super high value, like beret for us, we get this big development. But here's the problem, it's hogging up over twenty acres of land and and oh, by the way. It's got all this frontage on Route seven, including a signalized. Uh intersection, so this is like really expensive infrastructure that it's that it's requiring, right? So if you take the assessed value and just divide it by the land. Then you're seven hundred and seventy thousand. Per acre, right, which again, sounds great, but but compared to what? Okay, so there there are other kind of more modest. More incremental. Development patterns that can generate a lot more value for the town, so that little building on Railroad Street. It's assessed at, you know, eight fifty nine. It's it's just on a tiny little lot and it's totally built out without any parking and it's it's got like almost, I think, a hundred percent lock coverage. The value per acre for that thing is over thirty million, so it's it's forty times. So so for the same, for the same amount of land, that little building in the downtown is forty times more productive and that's creating the cash flow that pays for the schools. It pays for the fire department. For all the roads and the maintenance and everything, so so really, you know, a building like this is actually subsidizing. This this sort of script mall development. So this, this is, this is a really important. Metric because this, this is, I think, the only way we're ever gonna get beyond just these nonsensical discussions about character and all this, it's like. Is it productive, does does it actually, you know, put money in the pocket of the town of Great Barrington or not, and you can measure it, it's really easy. And so. The frustrating part is that a lot of the best. Most productive building types are not allowed under the current zoning, it's just. It's just insane, so it's like, okay, well, let's write the zoning so that. You know, the very best, most value-producing things. Aren't allowed and then you are allowed to build things that that might even be a negative cash flow for the town because you're gonna maintain all this expensive infrastructure. So think about this, this is, this is really important and I think this is the way we can get beyond a lot of the. The really dysfunctional discussion about some of the issues because this is, this is ultimately. You know, what pays the bills for the town. Uh all right, so let's keep going, um so so the path forward, so. Overall, um my recommendations, if we want more housing, reduce the complexity, it it shouldn't be the same process for nine units as for ninety-nine, it just shouldn't. And 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 it's gonna mean that the smaller projects just won't get done, people won't attempt them. And, and, and it's going to mean that the smaller projects just won't get done. People won't attempt them. Um, so there's, there's a number of ways we could do it. Uh, to me, the, I think the, the most straightforward way. Is to just make reasonable developments just by right and in more cases. I think in, in virtually every zone. I think people should be able to come as, you know, without being a full-time professional developer and. Take the property to the next increment. Um, you know, it doesn't mean somebody can go and do whatever they want, build a thirty-story tower, nothing like that. But just the next increment of intensification. Now, if you're on a triplex, add another unit. It becomes a four. You know, you know, if you're, if you're a four unit, maybe you go up to a six or an eight, those, those sorts of things. And then, and then I think also, um, the, the way that, that. We can get everyone to agree on this is, is by focusing things on like value per acre and, and eliminating the, the parking minimums. So here's a couple of resources I would suggest. Strong Towns has some great articles. If you haven't checked it out, um, I definitely would. Um, Urban Three is a consulting company that, that actually does this value per acre analysis for different municipalities. And it's some very cool graphics showing how it works. And I, it blows people's minds because. Many of the very modest-looking buildings wind up being a lot more productive than these big shiny new developments. Which I think people kind of realize to their horror want it being, you know, n- negative cash flow. And then finally, um, in terms of recruiting more developers, the Incremental Development Alliance is a great. Um, group, um, in, in sort of helping to, to teach people, you know, how to become developers at a, a small scale. So. That's it. That's, that's everything. Um. I'll, uh, I'll, I'll leave it to, to any questions that, that folks have.
Great. Thank you, Sam. This is wonderful. Uh, okay, so I'll open it up to the, uh. The subcommittee. Who wants to go first?
Um, Sam, why is that house on, uh, the building on Railroad Street non-conforming?
Uh, because of dimensional requirements. It, um, it takes up the entire, um, lot. So it has a hundred percent lot coverage and it also had no parking at all.
Well, it doesn't need parking in the V C O D, right?
Well, not for, not if it's residential, but it has, you know, retail on the floor. Of course, the retail does need parking. I think, um, for every two hundred square feet of retail does. And it has a couple floors of retail because it goes down, the retail goes down in the basement. So.
Where's off-street parking on Railroad Street?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, so like for forty-seven Railroad Street, for instance, when we did our special permit, we were in the V C O D. So we didn't need any off-street parking for. The apartments, but we, we did for the, for the retail.
Yeah, remember that Malcolm? That they had to ha- they had to secure parking spaces? Yeah, I remember that.
Uh. No, I know, not for.
Yeah, I think.
Residential, but not for retail because none of those retail stores in, uh, the.
Was it, was it for retail? It was for something. They had to secure a number of spaces.
Uh, yeah. So, uh, just question, um. I'm, I'm curious about your advocacy about the parking, um, the, the high cost of free parking, which is. It seems like in an urban setting, um, that might be. A good argument, but in a rural setting where, you know, to go from here to, uh. Uh, to Home Depot, you need a car. Uh, to go from here to a grocery store, you need a car. To go from here to Staples down the road, you probably need a car. Um, if you're seventy-four years old anyway. So I'm, 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 I'm not sure that the problem isn't, is, is parking so much as it is cars. Uh, as long as we don't have public transportation, what are we going to do for, uh, for transportation if we don't have parking?
Malcolm, I think the idea is that if it's the free parking part, right? It's not parking. Right? Like, the only way you start to change things is you start to charge for parking.
Yeah, but I, I, I think part of the argument was also, uh, parking requirements for. The building.
Yeah, but if you start to charge for parking, it changes, it changes everything around, right?
So there's, yeah, so there's street parking and there's off-street parking. So for instance. Um, you know, if I, if I build a building. And there's, there's street parking and there's four parking spaces right in front of the building. Those don't count towards the parking requirements. Right? So, so you, you don't get to, you don't even get to include those in the analysis. They exist, the, the on-street parking, like right in front of the, the building in question. Those, those are not included.
Yeah.
And Sam, this is a common, this is a, like, we talk about this a lot. In the planning board and we always get stuck on this and we always like, what is the alternative, right? And so we, like. We reduce the parking requirements, but then, like. We, we just, we can't. We can't get over that, right?
Yeah, well, I think it's. Yeah, it's because people view it as their civil right to have all sorts of free parking. But the, the, the point is that the free parking isn't actually free. It, it has, it's, it's like inflation. It's the cost of the parking finds its way into every nook and cranny. It increases the cost of development. It limits the, the density of development that, that one can do. It, it finds its way into the rent. It finds its way into, you know, buying a cup of coffee. So the, the cost of the parking is, is in there somewhere. And, and this, this is, this is why. The book is valuable because you, you need to go through blow by blow. What about an urban setting? What about a rural setting? You know, what about this? What about new development? And it does that. And so, so that's, that's why it's, you know, it's, it should be required reading for everybody.
Yeah, we make everyone pay for parking and roads and all of the infrastructure around it. And it really perpetuates it because owning a, it makes owning a car and using it. Much cheaper than it actually is. And so then the idea of like mass transit and everything, it de-emphasizes, like, no one's going to want to use it because of how cheap a car is. And so, and, and that, that's the idea. Like, none of this other stuff will ever work. Well, we just need to build more mass transit, but people won't use it. Because the alternative is so much more convenient and cheap. And so, yeah, I mean, the only way you start to change it is like the easiest way, well, the baby step is to start just charging for it. You know, and just get everyone used to paying for parking. And it, you know, it's sort of normal when you go to a city. But it is like out here, it is, you know, like the town will take like. You know, of course, when Pittsfield put them up on, on, uh, North and South, it was like, whoa, you know? And I don't know, I mean, like from me using it, it's not, you know, it's not that big of a deal to use it, but. Yeah, there's a lot more of them available.
Yeah, well, and I, I, I put that map of, of the parking reform up because, I mean, I, I. By now, most people have figured out that the parking. Uh, requirements, off-street parking requirements are, are value destroying for the town in which they are. Instituted, so.
Yeah.
You know, I, we don't want to be like Hartford where, you know, they, they demolish buildings to put surface parking and now everyone regrets it. And it looks like, you know, a wasteland in the downtown. And, and I think we're fortunate that, that, you know, we don't, we don't have a lot of that, but. But this is, this is clearly the trend. I mean, every, every year, more and more cities have figured this out, that it's, it's just. It, it sounded good in the beginning and it probably was when cars were relatively new, but we've. Not only have we tipped over to the point of diminishing returns, but we're now well into negative returns on more parking.
Yeah, well, the select board had the discussion a few years back, you know, with the, um, Berkshire Block. Which is now, you know, laundreland. So we had affordable housing there and a laundromat and. The new owners wanted to, um, to knock that building to, to. Create more surface parking. So that was one of the discussion that we had. Luckily, that didn't happen, but. Um, I'm mindful of Garfield that, um, Garfield, you need to leave in a few minutes. Do you have any questions? Because I don't want to.
Well, I was wondering what, um, mid. What you meant by, um, mid-market pricing or mid-range parking, um, market prices? What, what is mid-range market pricing?
Uh, I don't recall exactly when I said that, but I mean, I, I think the, the, the median, um. Income in Berkshire County is, is seventy-one thousand. So, you know, the. The, if, if you use the sort of one-third type, um. Metric that most people use to qualify for housing costs, you know, somebody who's right at the median and they're making seventy-one thousand. They can afford, you know, right around two thousand bucks a month in rent. That's, that would be the, the median.
That's not just rent, that's total housing costs.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty percent should be rent, utilities, taxes.
It, in a, in a good way. Um. Yeah.
That's why so mu- so much of the.
But you did say something about mid-range market rate and I wanted to know what that was because it didn't sound. Uh, expensive. It, it sounds pretty bleak is what it sounds like. And it sounds like we need to actually. Go over everything. I know we're talking about doing the master plan again. And boy, this might be the time to look at the zoning. Some of it does sound like it's really prohibitive. And maybe could antiquated at this time. It needs to be revamped, updated and. Knowing that this is part of the problem. And we need to, to act on it instead of talking about it and recognizing it and not doing anything about it.
Hmm, yeah. I mean, that, that's my question, I guess, to the planning board, not to put you guys in the spotlight, but. Um, obviously, this has been discussed for many, many years. So, you know, where are we in terms of the planning board discussion and?
Well, I mean, we've been moving toward, um, more by right housing. Um, right now, you can. Build up to four pretty much anywhere by right, units by right. Uh. The, uh, special permit process is a burden. Um, I, I don't necessarily see the way around it. I, I'd like to. One, one of your ideas, uh, uh, the pre-approved housing designs is really a. Maybe that's a really good way of getting around special permits. The, the problem for the town is we don't have any, there's no way to create. Enforceable design standards. So when a project comes in, um, the, one, one of the purposes of special permit is to allow, uh, uh, a design review. Uh, with some teeth. I mean, we do have a design review board that has no authority, but, uh. Uh, the special permit is, is the only way to, uh, uh, provide, uh, design review. Um.
So is this something that comes up between voters or like if we wanted to totally revamp? Like the four units, so Sam, you mentioned the four units. So this is, uh, recent, that it's a four unit by right. So your example on the hill no longer pertains or?
Uh, well, I, I think, I think what Malcolm might be talking about is the fact that. You can, I think you can do a triplex in, in most places and then also an A D U. Uh, which is, I, I'm not sure how that would work if you, if you had a, a four-unit building. Whether you could call one of the units and maybe you, maybe you.
Well, A D U now is defined as anything up to nine hundred square feet, so.
Okay, yeah, it can be contained in the building. It doesn't have to be a separate structure.
So we only three units by right? Is that what we're really saying?
Um.
Great, up to three units by right now, as opposed to just.
But yes.
Okay, if someone wanted to create a multifamily for, you know, like a standard four, that they would have to come, this special permit and, okay. So that. Um.
I, there was something interesting that Sam said, um, when he was talking about. Like, Sam, am I right that you were saying that allowing things, um, so like if there's a property that already has. Like, uh, triplex on it. That, like this kind of incremental that you can automatically turn it into, like by right, turn it into like a fiveplex. Where is, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's sort of the essence of, of the approach to incremental development. I mean, if, you know. If, if a developer wants to come into like a residential area and put in, you know, a hundred units. I mean, that would be super disruptive, right? That would be, that would change the whole character and the nature of everything, but.
There's one question before I go, Kent, may I?
Yeah.
Are we too small for big developers to come in and do what you're speaking of as far as making? Things affordable, even market race, because we don't, maybe we don't have the space. We don't have, it's not like we can say, well, here's enough room to build another hundred units or whatever. So therefore, maybe that is that part of the reason why maybe no one's coming here.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of the reason. I mean, I, you know, I think, I think to the extent that there are. Developers kind of roaming the plains, looking for deals. I mean, they're, they're going to be going to places that have a lot of demographic growth. So they're going to want to be going to places like Texas and Florida where there's just lots of people moving in. You know, we, we don't have that. We're, we're flat to maybe slightly down. But we still need housing. So we're just, we're just not going to attract. That kind of developer and that, that's my point. I think our emphasis is to be on. Let's develop our own group of homegrown developers, but that's, that's going to mean, you know. These are, these are like my example, like maybe it's an electrician and, you know, as a side job, he's going to like. Build a little four-family and who's a tonic or something, you know? That, that we can do, um, but I think, I think we need to make some changes to kind of grease the skids to, to let that happen.
Can I just say one other thing? You gotta rock and roll. But is there anything, I know I've read this somewhere and it was happening out west. Students were building homes. I don't see why we can't look into that arena. It's going to be a lot less expensive. It could be done. As, as some of their projects, if you will, and wouldn't be as costly, but I know it's happening.
It's happening especially, especially with tiny homes. I think this is why there's just so much. Interest in tiny homes and it's not because the tiny homes are good to live in. They're really small and really inconvenient. But they're cheap and you could build it yourself without being an expert. And so then it's like. It's, it's got a very, very strong economic argument and that's why there's so much interest in it. Yeah, students could totally build a tiny house.
Thank you. I'd love to hear more, uh, if you would even come back or give me everything that was said in the rest. I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so yeah, so you know, I, I'm intrigued by the multifamilies because I definitely kind of where, uh, where I am and where Sam, you are. You know, I'm seeing, I'm being concerned or I find it concerning that, um, there are homes that were multifamilies being turned into a single-family. Seasonal homes and the person lives there, you know, maybe thirty days of the year. Um. So that, that's quite concerning that we're losing the, the very few multifamilies we have to that. So that would be one thing I would. You know, look to, I don't know if it's planning board, but some policy that, that, um. You know, doesn't really let that.
There's no special permit required to convert a multifamily home back to.
No, yeah, I don't know, exactly, but just something.
And I, I don't, I'm not, I didn't mean to criticize somebody who, who wanted to.
No, 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 no. And that's a whole nother thing, yeah.
Yeah, I don't. I think if you. I don't know if you can do that or if that would fly at town meeting.
Well, no, I know it's not.
That kind of restriction on, that kind of restriction on property use is, is, is rough.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it. Yeah, I, I wouldn't propose that. I think.
No, 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 I'm not proposing it. I'm, I'm just saying that there's a lack of multifamilies and I, I.
Yeah, I mean, the, the point.
That we could, um, you know, protect them or create more because they do fit in, you know, incremental, like they do fit in.
Right, well, so, so that, but my point about that was that if, if you have a house like that, that's in the right location and it's got good bones. Like the, the, the sort of structure of the house inherently has flexibility. Like it can be a good single-family home, but it can also be a good multifamily and we should just let that happen. We should just let it go back and forth. And you know, maybe, maybe there are times when we need lots of big homes because people have bigger families. Maybe there are times when we need, you know, more apartments and then it should go to that. So I just think it, the, the, the transition should be easier. And, and it's, it sure isn't easy right now.
So, so to, to build off that, so incremental development. So if you have the bones and you have a single family, you want to create four units. And this is the planning board. Do you have to go to a special permit if, as long as it stays in the, the footprint? If, if you turn in like, you know, one unit into four units or is it, you're protected if you stay in that footprint?
I mean, I think it depends on the zone that you're in. I mean, in some cases. Sure you could do it, yeah. And then you, I mean, then of course, then you get into the, you know, the building code and you have to have fire separated walls between units and all those sorts of things, but.
Parking.
My, my point is that the, the lot of the restrictions that we have and the. The, you know, the, they're just the big deal of the special permit, they're a barrier. Because they're, what, it's, it's keeping away the little things and, and that, you know, if people want to preserve the character of the town and they want all these things, then. That's what we should be doing. Small bets, small projects, you know? Do an addition and add an A D U. All those, those are the things that we should really be making as easy as possible for people to do.
Yeah.
Because, yeah.
So is that something, I think, or that we can?
Lee, in the last five years, I mean, well, the last ten years I've been on the planning board, I mean, we've, we've eased a lot of the regulations as far as. Uh, creating multifamily homes or A D Us. Um. And I'll tell you, I mean, there, there's been like one A D U, I think that's been. And I'll tell you, I mean, there there's been like one A D U, I think that's been built.
Yeah.
After the uh bylaws changed and I think there are more multifamily houses that have been trans uh changed to single family than the other way around.
Yeah, yeah.
The middle of, we're in the middle of affordable housing shortage. It's not, it's not a matter of the town. Uh bylaws, it's a matter of uh the the money, uh, who's got the money, what are they paying?
But it it work, it's not just an affordable housing shortage. We're in, it, there's a housing shortage across the board. I mean, when I have an apartment that comes up in forty seven railroad, I mean, those are relatively expensive. I have people just beating the door down to get in there. I mean, I have like thirty people on the waiting list right now. You know, you usually want.
I like the distinction between affordable with a capital A and affordable with a smaller. And I like to use the word affordable, meaning it's they, people should be able to buy or rent.
Yeah.
No, no.
Making making an ordinary income.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, um.
Whether it's.
Questions in terms of like the overhaul and and special permit, I mean, is there, I know you've been chipping away and I know, you know, A D Us isn't kind of going as. As quickly as we were hoping, but is there something else we can do from planning board perspective or select board?
Well, I mean, we're.
Just.
The by right discussion, we've we've been having that like often. For the last few cycles. And so, I mean, I think we're going to continue to have that, you know, I mean, we did.
Process, the plans and the, you know, all that.
Well, that's that's special, that's special permit, right?
Is that so?
Permit requirements and and then I think, you know, so when do those kick in? Like what size, you know, like? I mean, yeah, and right now it kicks in at a very low number. And so I'm doing it.
But if we want to lessen the the hoops that they have to jump through when they come with a special permit, you know, they don't have to. Where, how does that get um rejigged and who does that if we want to?
Well, that's just making, that's just, that's just the the in the table of uses, just just making it allowable, right?
But it's still, it's still town meeting has to approve all those changes.
But that's, yeah, that's something.
You know, so yeah, it is that. So there's there's part, I mean, there's definitely a perception that, you know, like we use special permit. To to control development, right? I mean, that's why we use it. And there there's there's a certain, there's a certain. Way you have to change the public perception to get all of these things passed by town meeting.
Right, well, that's 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 why I put so much emphasis on that value per acre idea.
Yeah, the value per acre, like starting to like get these think, these ideas in the general conversation.
Right.
You know, it's like what generates tax income to help reduce my taxes? Exactly, right. It always has to be framed.
And and that, and it's also a way, because everyone comes to town meeting and they've got their one little issue that they care about, right? So it's like, all right, if you want more money for the schools. Let's let people build things that create free cash flow for the town. And it's as simple as that. And and, you know, I mean, if we could have another railroad street. That would make a meaningful difference, uh, because it's it's a huge delta between those buildings and 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 that doesn't mean you build those. You know, everywhere. I mean, there's a reason we have zoning and, you know, it has to be reasonable, but it's just allow the next increment of development.
Yeah, it was like, I think like, there, like, I don't know if we really seriously threw it around, but like on Church Street, right? Uh, like, that was one place that was talked about kind of in that realm. I don't know if we were thinking as dense. As railroad, but like that's one of those easy places, right? Um, yeah.
So Sam, I had a question about the uh railroads. He had, you know, thirty people on the waitlist. Are these? Can you talk to me about the the um the desire for that type of property? Are these people that are using as a second? Home or uh is it locals that have the money that want the high quality new units?
I think, I think we've only ever had one tenant in the past five years that was like a part-time tenant like that. Um, and and, you know, so most of them, it's not like a second home situation, but it's it's. It's quite a variety. Um, it's everything from um young people where it's their very first apartment ever. Um, actually, a lot of the growth now in apartments is from seniors who don't want to own their own home because it's such a maintenance headache when they get older. So we've got a number of of people who are just, you know, I'm I'm seventy years old, I'm done, I just want to like pay a rent and I can call the maintenance guy. And so we've got. So so that's an example where the the housing that's needed for those folks is, doesn't exist right now. Because the old housing stock is not A D A compliant, like, you know, forty seven railroad had an elevator already. So it's like really well set up for that. Um, but that's a big need is for, you know. Where am I going to put mom, you know, and and it's and forty seven works out really well because it's in town, then, you know, the family is coming and visiting and um. So so that's, that's actually, there's a big need for. Quality rental housing for seniors. Uh, I think I'm going to get a number of those people in Lee and the in the project that we're building there. Um, for that reason, it's just, there's, it doesn't exist.
Yeah, um, and can you give us a sense of what what those rents are? I mean, they're obviously not people just on social security. So these are people that probably cashed out and sold their home and.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I mean, some of them don't have an income because, yeah, they sold their home and they, you know, they just have savings that they're they're. Living on, um, but you know, the 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 rents in, they vary, none of those units of the really the same, they're all different because we put four buildings together. So it's a really weird floor plate. But for a one-bedroom apartment, I mean, they they range anywhere from just below two thousand to I think we have one really big one that's like. Twenty four hundred a month. Um, so it's, you know. So it's doable, you know, like if you're making seventy thousand, eighty thousand, which is like kind of a median income like that, you know, that's a workable.
Yeah.
Rent.
Yeah, so, yeah, so if you have two people, that's.
And then it's subsidies. I mean, do you feel like, you know, if developers had, you know, we're, i- if we address the zoning and we address the special permit, you know, subsidies to help? Small, you know, smaller developers, you know, repurpose units or um, you know, build on a smaller scale. Is that something that is helpful or is that really not?
I mean, sure. I mean, I I think, I think if if the town was really serious about putting the money where their mouth was, then that, I mean, that could only, it could only help. Um, I, I think a lot of people on the select board and to a certain extent the planning board, they seem to think that. Um, you know, there, these requirements for inclusionary zoning where like a certain percentage of the units have to be affordable, somehow make it attractive to like do a bigger project or something, they they really don't. I mean, most developers just don't want to deal with that because, again, it's just like a big bureaucratic headache. I mean, you've got to fill out forms, you've got to, you know, they come and check. Um, you you've got to, they're they're also during the construction process. Um, they, they're really on you about the affordable units, like, you know, they don't want someone. Making those substantially worse than the than the market rate, you know, so they're sort of all over you. So so most of these developers, I mean, it's, it's hard enough as it is. They just don't want to go there. So like, for instance, the inclusionary zoning right now in Great Barrington says, you know, you can do up to nine units in in uh. In in a number of zones, but if you go above nine, then it triggers this thing. I think you're just going to see, you know, to the extent new projects happen, there'll be, there'll be nine units. I mean, if you're choosing between nine and twelve, you'll just do nine to avoid the that whole thing. So that inclusionary zoning really just doesn't work. I mean, just Google it, does inclusionary zoning work? You'll find all these articles and studies. It it doesn't work the way that it's advertised and and so I I think. Again, it's it's sort of this, I think it's it's because people care about the issue and they want to solve the problem and, but they just don't know what else to do. So they just say, all right, well, you have to do affordable, and that that's why the affordable housing. Versus housing that's affordable, like the affordable housing just totally takes over the discussion in ways that really aren't productive.
Yeah, and and unfortunately, you know, there's not a lot of subsidies, a lot not, a lot of money for uh market rate housing that's affordable. So you get a lot of subsidies and help from the state and the feds when you do the affordable capital A, um, you know, housing and then.
Right.
Well, that's the issue is that you don't really have that help from another entity.
Right, yeah, so you, well, so this is, this is the problem though. It's like, you know, fancy custom homes are getting built and and the true affordable projects are getting built. But what are you supposed to do if you make seventy, eighty thousand a year? Like, you're kind of in no man's land and there's no program for that. And it's just, you know, it's really hard to make the math work as a developer, so it's.
Yeah.
That's why we just need just more units. We just need more inventory.
So I mean, I I and jump in if I'm just going to keep rattling questions, but jump in, Jeremy, if you want. Um, so generally, we were saying like to to build a new affordable capital A unit was around four hun- four four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's taking into account, you know, just a general one bedroom and the interest rates and the costs that, you know, with the red tape that you have to go through the bureaucracy. Um, versus, you know, when you're repurposing something or building new or and not dealing with the bureaucracy. So can you kind of talk us through like what's? Obviously, new builds are probably cheaper and something that the a developer would rather do rather than repurposing an old home or what what's kind of magic? Bullet in.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's actually, it's a great question. I think different people have different ideas about it. Um, you know, I mean, I've I've only ever done adaptive reuse, um, but it's, it's, it's difficult in its own way. Um, I mean, the the benefit of doing adaptive reuse is that you often have a lot of the basics in place. And then like, you know, you don't have to fight about the setbacks and the, you know, the coverage because it's just already done and you just say, wow, this is just, I'm just fixing the existing building. So so that's sort of a, the the limitations that you wind up with are actually kind of a benefit because they they do simplify things. But then on the other hand, like. Thank God they don't build old buildings the way they used to because they're, you know, they just didn't have the engineering and the materials and. So you wind up having to do a lot of like custom fussing around with, you know, making things work that just aren't ideal. Building ground up is just very predictable. But then it's the full monty, you know, you've got to, you've got to do everything up to code and and, you know, the the building code is one of these things where it's like. It's it's sort of like aspirational, right? Like, like, almost no buildings unless they were just completed yesterday meet building code. Like there are, most buildings are old, like they're, they don't meet the code in hundreds of ways. So then it's like, all right, you want us to build new housing, but it has to be at the standard that like virtually no other. Unit that exists right now meets that standard. So like the bar is is even higher. So, um, so it's just much more expensive to build new. You know, you you've just got to go the extra mile, you know, in in many, I mean, and you get a better product. The new buildings are safer. They're more energy efficient, they're, you know, the A D A compliant, they're better in many, many ways, but. There's a cost for that, like there's a cost to all this complexity, is 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 in in many ways. And you're kind of like really dependent on all these architects and engineers to tell you what to do. You can't just figure it out. You know, it takes a lot of.
Hmm.
Thinking, so.
So really, if if the town was to, um, you know, provide subsidies to s- smaller developers. And un- unless the special permit process changes or, you know, we change the the table of uses, it's really gonna, it's it's still gonna be the same headache. I mean, you might be able to have a little bit extra money, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's there's no really anything that the town can do about the international building code.
Yeah.
There 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 is, there, I think in the state of North Carolina, I believe, um, what they. They uh just adopted something recently that let uh like a small multifamily. Uh, building like four to eight units could be treated under the residential code, so it could be treated like a house. So that that definitely had some benefits to it, but that's, again, that's that was sort of like at the state level, so it's interesting to watch, but it's it's not anything that, you know, we could do here in town. Um, but, you know, e- everyone is working on this problem. It's just the complexity of the process. How can we? You know, get to the finish line without having to go through this agonizing process and there are just lots of experiments. So like the pre-approved housing design is a great idea, but it's like, think how long it would take to get everyone on board with what those approved designs are, right? I mean, that's that's going to be a quite an effort to get agreement on.
I I could see perhaps a um a shell put into the bylaw that says pre-approved housing designs get fast-tracked. And then over time, build a catalog of pre-approved houses that meet whatever the criteria is that, uh. Uh, so I mean, the but the first step is building the 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 zoning capability. Of having the approved houses and then you don't have to, then, you know, you do it in such a way so you don't go to the town meeting every time you add a new uh de- design to uh to catalog.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, it's it's a, it's a, it's a nice idea because it's like you could just pick, you know, our favorite buildings in town, you know? The nicest looking, the most functional, the most economically productive and, you know, pick, pick those and then just copy them and then. You know, how how can someone complain about that, right? And and so it's it's a great idea, um, because, because then, then you could avoid a lot of the. It it just takes away the rope in this tug of war that happens in these in these meetings. Those the special permit meetings really bring out the worst in people and and so I I think I think they're to be avoided at all costs.
No, I mean, what we found is that the uh s- the special permit itself isn't. I mean, it's it's burdensome and it's a deterrent, but the threat of a lawsuit is a lot bigger deterrent, uh, you know, and and there's a lot of people that will just. You know, immediately uh press a lawsuit if they don't get their way in the in the meeting.
Um, yeah, and I think it's frustrating for the for the committee members. I mean, you know, you all are are volunteers and, you know, usually when there's a special permit, there's like one or two obvious issues that. Are the points of discussion, but the, you know, as far as the special permit goes and everyone zeroes in on us. But then, you know, just people come from the public and they can bring up anything and and they do, and then that's just a waste of everyone's time.
Hmm, so I mean, I assume Malcolm, the the planning board's kind of working on addressing some of the special unit um issues or is that something?
Special permit issues?
That's special permits.
I mean, I I'll tell you, I'm I'm kind of a go go slow person myself because I'd hate to uh kind of wipe out, I mean. Zoning is essentially conservative and and essentially is 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 maintaining the status quo. Um. Change, getting rid of zoning, on the other hand, is uh is uh, you know, it opens it up so that uh those who have. You know, some s- uh stake in the status quo are now left empty. And I I I think we have to be careful about uh, uh, you know, throwing the baby out of the bathwater, but there's definitely a need to encourage uh. Um, smaller development without having to go through a lot of red tape. There's no question about that.
I mean, I think, I think one thing uh on on that being that I would suggest is just taking a hard look at whether some of the existing buildings are. Compliant with the zoning, because my experience has been when I've, when I've looked at at properties that have come up for sale, a lot of them are existing non-conforming. And and that's, that's where the zoning is is not preserving the status quo. It's it's actually asking for something quite different from what we have.
The seventies, uh, I mean, the zoning that took place in the seventies was, took place in a in an environment where there was hope that Great Barrington was going to continue growing as a town. As soon as that uh the zoning got published in the seventies, Great Barrington's population started to decline and it hasn't stopped. It's still declining. So the zoning was totally out of out of whack. Uh, you know, one of the big things we did was uh in the town of Who's, in the village of Who's Tonic. Where almost all of the properties in this center of town there was, were non-conforming because. Somebody who wrote zoning wanted bigger houses in the center of Who's Tonic. Uh, so what we did is um, uh, changed the zoning to try to. Bring virtually everything into conformance. Um, and I didn't know we had a problem with downtown, uh, the business district, to tell you the truth, with conforming. Uh, I thought the uh uh Village Center overlay district was written in such a way to make those conforming, so it's worth looking at.
Hmm, okay, um, I guess, Jeremy, do you have any questions or last? Uh, I know on the um. The agenda, we're going to talk about the congregant housing and getting ready for next, uh, the next meeting was a joint meeting, but. We are running out of time, so if you don't mind, if we put those two agenda items to another.
No, I I I sent out that congregant housing thing really as a as a heads up.
Oh, okay, because you guys are talking about Thursday, right?
Yeah, yeah, we will talk about it again on Thursday.
Okay, super. So you can report back on that. Um, so this is huge and, you know, Sam, I really appreciate it. I'm probably going to follow you up and and bug you, so. I'm probably going to follow you up and and bug you, so.
Anytime, I I love talking about this stuff, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a huge problem. Um, and it's just, yeah, there's, there's a lot to do and and um, a lot we can.
Appreciate it, Sam. Thanks for your time.
Hey, any, anytime, anytime. I, thanks for the chance to to come and and talk with you all. This is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then great, great questions, by the way.
Yeah, thank you so much. All right, so we'll let you go and then I'm good.
Okay, have, have a great night.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right, uh so let me open it up to anyone else want to, before I open it up to um, citizen speak and then we'll. All right, uh anyone from the um citizen speak that wants to speak or ask a question or? Please raise your hand. All right, uh anyone from the media? I see Eileen. Okay, um so do I have, so we have the, our next meeting, which is a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust. And that's December, my phone just died. Uh is it December? Let me just check real quick. Uh, it's.
December thirteenth.
Thirteenth, yes, great. Um, so, you know, I, what I'd like to do is just, you know, again, kind of continue our discussion and try to um. Make sure that we're not duplicating efforts and, you know, are really kind of working together, not that we aren't, but I I'm just very, you know, curious about what, what. Path that they're taking and by then we'll have a sense of um, their proposal to the, to see. Um, the Community Preservation Committee, uh because we have our meeting tomorrow, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Jeremy or the committee members.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Yeah. For step ones anyway.
Yeah, for step ones, exactly. So we'll have a sense of um what their ask means and how we can help them, so. All right, so do I have a motion to uh during the meeting?
So moved.
A second.
Um, we'll call Jeremy. Malcolm and I, yes, and um Garfield left. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you so much for bringing Sam. I really appreciate it. That was awesome.
Yeah, thank you. This was great.
All right, bye.